Hey, who's on?
Hey, Kristi, it's Paul Lux.
Hey, Paul, how are you doing?
I'm good.
Good.
Change up my background here, we had a online birthday party for our daughter yesterday, so I put up a picture of her and her friends in our backyard, sort of set it.
I like the beard.
Oh, well.
The quarantine beard.
Exactly, my wife not so much, but.
Well, good to see you.
You too, good to see everybody, actually.
Yeah, no kidding. Can't wait till we get back to normal.
Yeah, whatever, whatever normal is for an election community, anyway.
Right.
Morning, Paul, good to see you.
Hey, Don, you doing all right?
Yeah, how about you?
Hanging in.
How's the weather down there in Florida?
We're gonna be in the probably pretty high eighties today, so it's getting, it's getting pretty, getting pretty warm, but you know, the, those, we always have that cold snap right around Easter, and then, you know, it goes away and we start summer without a whole lot of spring, usually.
Yeah, us too, but we've had a pretty good spring here this year, it's been wet, though.
Today's a little bit muggier than usual, we also had a little rain in the morning, so.
We had an interesting event, you know, one of those unprecedented things, we have an incumbent county commissioner who, yesterday, at the close of yesterday's commission meeting, announced he was not seeking reelection after having been prefiled and raised, you know, six figures in campaign funds, and said, you know, not gonna, decided not to run for reelection, so that started a whole swirl of people.
Some unexpected business.
Oh, yeah, quite, quite an interesting day yesterday.
Yeah.
So, Paul, how many online petition signatures have you been receiving locally?
Well, we don't have a way to process them electronically, so our candidates unfortunately are having to print them out and bring them in, although we're being a little lenient on, you know, Florida has that law about the size and the perspective, whether they're, you know, you can't make them too skinny or too fat, so we're having to be a little bit lenient on that, but it's really, it has helped a couple of people who were, who were pretty close, I know there are several other people who were, who are still struggling to meet the deadline this coming Monday.
Good afternoon, everyone, we are currently live streaming. All right, sir.[352.13]
Perspective whether they're, you know, you can't make them too skinny or too fat. So we're having to be a little bit lenient on that. But it's really, i- it has helped a couple of people who were, who were pretty close. I know there are several other people who were, uh, who are still struggling to meet the deadline of this coming Monday.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are currently live streaming. All right.
Good afternoon. It looks like start time. It looks like we have all of the participants for today's hearing. So I'm U.S. Election Assistance Commission Chairman Ben Haveland, and I'd like to call the second hearing on the VBSG 2.0 requirements to order. For the first order of business, I'd like to call roll. Commissioner or Vice Chairman Donald Palmer?
Present.
Commissioner Thomas Hicks?
Here.
Commissioner Christie McCormick?
Here.
Excellent. With everyone in attendance, we'll move on to the adoption of the minutes. Unless there are any corrections to the previously distributed minutes, I will now take a motion to adopt the minutes from the April 22nd, 2020 Virtual Public Hearing on Election Response to COVID-19.
I move to adopt the minutes from the April 22nd, 2020 Virtual Public Hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. The minutes from the April 22nd, 2020 hearing have been adopted. Can I please have the agenda on the screen? Thank you. I'll now take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I so move.
Is there? Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Today's agenda as submitted has been approved. Thank you, everyone who's joined us for today's virtual hearing. We're operating in the unique conditions right now, and I and my fellow commissioners appreciate the participants and everyone watching online for taking time to discuss this important topic. Despite the challenging times we are facing, the EAC recognizes the importance of continuing to move the approval process of the Voluntary Voting System Guidelines, or VBSG 2.0 requirements forward. The finalization of the VBSG 2.0 requirements will enable voting system manufacturers to build new and improved voting systems. Today's hearing is another step in the approval process. While the VBSG 2.0 will not impact any voting systems for this November, it is crucial we get this work done now in order for the next generation of voting equipment to be built as soon as possible. I view election administration as the infrastructure of our democracy, and the steps we take today will help set the standards for the voting equipment in polling places for years to come. Aligned with the VBSG 2.0 principles and guidelines, the VBSG 2.0 requirements represent the standards to which a voting system is tested to obtain certification under the EAC Testing and Certification Program. These requirements contain new and expanded material in many areas, including reliability and quality, usability and accessibility, and security. The VBSG 2.0 is designed to enhance the security and accessibility of voting systems, strengthen interoperability among system components, encourage innovation in the voting system marketplace, and ultimately create a more nimble set of standards that are responsive to the evolving needs of the elections community. This is the second public hearing regarding the VBSG 2.0 requirements. During the first hearing held March 27th, TGDC and NIST representatives provided a high-level overview of the recommended requirements and responded to questions from the commission. A recording of that hearing is available at EAC.gov or on our YouTube page. Today, we'll hear from state and local election officials about how they utilize the VBSG program, how it supports state and local efforts to administer secure, accessible elections, and why the VBSG 2.0 update is important. As we have gone through the process to update the VBSG, there have been many discussions about the balance of security and accessibility. Today's second panel will continue that discussion as it relates to VBSG 2.0. I would again like to thank all of our panelists for joining us. I look forward to today's discussion. And with that, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Donald Palmer for any opening remarks.
Thank you, Chairman Haveland. I appreciate it. Thank you to our participants today and everyone watching. The VBSG 2.0 update is not only vitally important to election officials, but by enabling manufacturers to build new and improved voting systems. These officials can better serve the voters and their communities. The goal is to increase the accuracy, usability, security, and accessibility of voting machines. The voting machines need to have a level of durability, reliable, reliability, and affordability for counties, cities, and states who need to purchase these systems with tax dollars. The VBSG should facilitate the manufacturing market to allow the free market to thrive with multiple vendors, at the same time providing affordable choices to states and localities when they go to purchase new and improved voting systems. These same voters are the taxpayers who will be funding the purchase of these voting machines. They are the customer, the client, and the ultimate user, so we have an obligation to these citizens. A lot has changed since 2015, and we hope that with the development of these requirements, voting systems across the country will be updated and bolster the level of security of elections and also incorporate new technologies of accessibility when it comes to voting. I look forward to this hearing to identify those areas of VBSG 2.0 draft that will need additional review and consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Palmer. Commissioner Hicks, would you care to offer opening remarks?
Yes, thank you. VBSG 2.0 is a result of feedback and encouragement from state and local officials, voting machine manufacturers, and usability, accessibility, and security interest groups. The drafting and editing process of VBSG 2.0 has been a long, thorough process, and many stakeholders have spent countless hours contributing to the effort and getting us to where we are here today. We still have a long way to go, but with continued discussion like today's hearing and input, we're one step closer to improving this important update. And lastly, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for continually moving the ball forward in this process as we face this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hicks. Commissioner McCormick?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Welcome to all who are joining this hearing online, and thank you to our panelists today for your participation. The information you share with us today is critical in the development and finalization of the new voting systems guidelines. It's important for us to hear from all sectors of election administration and the impact these require, with these requirements will have on them. So many of the discussions right now are focused on how to carry out the remaining primaries and the general election this year, and rightly so. Given the events of the past few months, none of us can predict what will happen in November, nor in following election cycles. But today's discussion on the VBSG 2.0 requirements is one that is looking beyond the challenging conditions that we are facing right now. By moving these requirements forward, we enable manufacturers to have reliable and consistent guidelines for developing safer and more secure voting systems for the coming years and gives election administrators more choice and another tool when deciding what voting systems will best fit their jurisdictions. Better, more secure systems, along with the efforts to ensure that voting is accessible and is a critical priority for the EAC. The law protects and demands accessibility and the rights of voters with disabilities. We still have some work to do on this front, but we're striving to get there, and I hope with the work on these requirements that we are advancing and improving both security and accessibility in voting systems. I look forward to hearing from the panelists today, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me the time.
Thank you, Commissioner McCormick. We'll now turn to our first panel. The first panel today will focus on the implementation and importance of updated VBSG 2.0 requirements at the state and local level. The vast majority of states utilize the Voluntary Voting System Guidelines, the EAC's accredited labs, or the EAC's Testing and Certification Program in some way for testing, evaluating, and certifying voting systems. Today's panelists are from states that use the VBSG in different ways. We will hear more about the importance and role of the VBSG from our panelists, who I'd like to introduce at this time. Christopher Chris Piper is the Commissioner at the Virginia Department of Elections. Lance Goff is the Executive Director of the Chicago Board of Election Commissioners, and Paul Lux is the Supervisor of Elections for Ocalusa County, Florida. And with that, Commissioner Piper, if you could start us off with any comments?
And Vice Chair Palmer, can everybody hear me? Want to make sure. Thank you, Chairman Haveland, Vice Chair Palmer, and Commissioners Hicks and McCormick for inviting me to today to speak about how states leverage the VBSG. I'm Christopher Piper, the Commissioner of the Virginia Department of Elections and the Chief Election Official of the Commonwealth of Virginia. I also serve as my state's representative to the EAC Standards Board and as the Southern Regional Representative on the Executive Board of the National Association of State Election Directors, NASED. I am proud to say that half of the EAC commissioners are my voters. I was appointed Commissioner of the Department of Elections in February 2018, but I began my career in elections in 2003, serving as the Campaign Finance Manager at the Virginia State Board of Elections until 2008, returning to the board to serve as Election Administration Manager under the leadership of now Commissioner Donald Palmer. Virginia requires federal standard, or certification to federal standards, as well as to Virginia standards. As you are all likely aware, in 2017, Virginia counties had to quickly replace voting equipment in the months before our gubernatorial election to address a vulnerability with our previous equipment. In Virginia, we have a major election every year, and we have multiple elections every year. We were scheduled to have five election days in 2020 alone, but the pandemic and the additional special election orders has increased that number to seven. The VBSG has real-world implications for the voters of the Commonwealth. I appreciate being invited into this conversation. This is a challenge for the elections community as a whole, not just for the vendor community. I have followed the conversation about the VBSG 2.0 since my days on the staff of the Department of Elections under then Secretary Palmer. It impacts all of us from at the national down to the local level of election administration. At my first national meeting with my colleagues in 2018 at the Standards Board meeting in Miami, one of my, one memory that stands out above all was the discussion of VBSG 2.0. And that's why it is unfortunate that we are still having this critical conversation. The TGDC approved the principles and guidelines in September 2017. The Standards Board and the Board of Advisors approved them in April 2018. And then we learned in September 2019 that the EAC would not be moving forward with the previously agreed-upon plan of having the principles and guidelines be the VBSG and having the requirements for system certification be a separate, more agile document as recommended by the NASED VBSG Working Group in 2015 and the EAC Future VBSG Working Group in 2015, as well as the TGDC, the Standards Board, and the Board of Advisors. In February of this year, then Vice Chair Haveland said that the principles and guidelines had not yet been voted on because of grammatical and spelling errors, but also said that these would be voted on soon. I don't want to relitigate the past, but the principles and guidelines have still not been adopted. And here's why all of this matters. States are desperate for flexible, agile requirements for our voting equipment. The federal stamp of approval is an asset for us, but only when it's current and right now. Federal certification is an obstacle to a more secure system. The process is not fast enough to adapt to the changing security environment or to address the accessibility needs of many voters. All of the state and local election officials who worked to get systems off of Windows 7 just last year will have to get their voting equipment off of Windows 10 when it sunsets in two years. That's just how technology life cycles work. In Virginia's own experience, we waited for VBSG 2.0, but having nothing approved, we moved in 2019 to adopt updated certification standards to ensure we were ready for 2020. The great pushback we received was significant, and the most standard argument was you're requiring more than what is currently required in the federal standard. The fact is, the day delay has proven to be a convenient excuse in all sectors not to update our voting systems. The proposed structure of the VBSG means that the requirements will be fixed at a moment in time, just as the VBSG 1.0 and 1.1 are. By the time the requirements are through the public comment period and approved by the Board of Advisors and Standards Board, neither of which have met yet in 2020, they will be out of date, especially from a security standpoint. Chairman Haveland has spoken several times of his desire to have an annual cleanup process for requirements to make sure they get looked at once a year. But we haven't heard whether or not that plan has been agreed to by a majority of the commissioners. I hope it is, and I hope you will communicate that to election officials. If the election community can't have the most flexible option that we all wanted, then assuring us that the requirements will be updated once a year is critical. I also hope that you will address how the VBSG can be updated in the absence of a quorum of commissioners. While none of us wants to go back to a time in which there was no quorum, election officials are planners, and we are all living our contingency plans right now. Nobody thought that 2020 would be hard because there would be a global pandemic. It would be irresponsible for us not to think about the worst-case scenario here, and we need to know what happens to the VBSG if the EAC loses a quorum. I know that you have expressed concerns about delegating authority to staff, but in many other areas of the certification process, you have already done just that. In version 2.0 of the Testing and Certification Program Manual, which was effective May 31st, 2015, after a vote of the three sitting commissioners at the time, staffer designated authority to issue guidance and explanation on the current requirements and procedures through a notice of clarification, interpret requirements via a request for interpretation, and make certification decisions about systems. Each of these has been used in the past to advance the certification program in the absence of a quorum so that states weren't left without an untested or uncertified system. Further, the 2019 Notice of Clarification issued by EAC staff around the Windows 7 sunset also gives staff the authority to determine whether a proposed change to a voting system constitutes a de minimis change. EA staff, EAC staff already have the authority to offer guidance on the existing requirements, clarify requirements, determine when systems do or not, do not need to go through the certification process at all, and certify systems. It stands to reason that they would be qualified to work with experts to make necessary changes to the requirements in the absence of a quorum of commissioners. My preferred scenario is one in which the requirements do not require a commissioner vote at all, and that EAC staff, who have already been delegated much of the responsibility with respect to managing and testing and certification program, are able to work with the National Institutes of Standards and Technology, state and local officials and security experts, including the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency to maintain the requirements. But if we cannot have that, then making provisions for staff to maintain the requirements in the absence of a quorum is a good compromise. Like all things related to election administration these days, how we approach these standards is critical to our ability to safeguard the security and integrity of our elections. Although there are plenty of valid concerns about cost and implementation, it's increasingly hard to maintain that the elections community holds security as one of our primary priorities when we continue to delay investments in the main technologies that serve as the backbone of elections administration. Thank you again for having me today. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Piper. Mr. Goff?
You are there.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to thank the members of the United States Election Assistance Commission for this invitation to speak and also say hello to my fellow members of this working group. The Voluntary Voting System Guidelines provides a benchmark which all of our voting systems must achieve. It has been my distinct honor to work with all of you to gather feedback and refine these guidelines. But before I make my remarks, I just would like to acknowledge the EAC for bringing together this high level of cooperation between local elections, county elections, state, and federal. It's something that has never been done in the past, and I applaud the EAC for doing this. I think these guidelines reflect the kind of teamwork all of us know we need to make elections work for everybody in our democracy. These guidelines form a foundation level of which we must demand as voters and election administrators in all areas. One, simplicity, the ease in use for voters and poll alike, resiliency of the equipment, security, accuracy, audibility, transparency, and most important of all, accessibility. However, much of these standards built a foundation that it's, we must need because both in individual election agency and as groups working together. We must be ready to adapt, to address, and the different concerns that we will discover as we go. concerns that we will discover as we go through testing, training, and contingency plans. I've said this because we are coming up with an election like nothing we've ever seen before. We've also, we've also said, we've often said that and heard that. This is the biggest election of our lives. Well, I'd like to let the board members know this will be the biggest election of our lives. Whether or not it's true, we know that the November 2020 election, we face challenges and certainties that we've never seen before. Using the guidelines of the voting system standards, it's now up to all of us election administrations to answer the voter's call. It's not, it's not that we need to have a plan. It's that, well, we need to shift and justify those plans to meet every-changing landscape in the time of a pandemic. We must create to make certain that we use the tools available under our laws and every program in our balloting system. We need to make certain that every voter has the ability to cast their ballot privately and independently, especially for all those voters who will be casting their ballots from home for the first time in their adult lives. This means starting as early as possible, developing voting instructions to ensure clarity and plain language. At electioneers, you know, a lot of our voters don't know what, you know, pre-Lat means, other verbiage that election people use. We need to put it in plain language. And like, and like the work of this body, it means collaboration. We have compared notes, plans, shared ideas. We've acknowledged when others might have a better way. We have to cooperate and collaborate exactly like the EAC did in bringing us all together in this device diverse group to review these guidelines. I would like to thank the EAC one more time for inviting me to this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Mr. Lux.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Paul Lux. I'm the supervisor of elections in Ocala-Lousa County, Florida, and I serve as the local representative from Florida on the Standards Board, as well as represent the Standards Board on the TGDC. As a local election official in Florida, I'm restricted by state law to only purchase voting equipment that has been certified by the state's Bureau of Voting System Certification. Florida, like many states, uses its own voting system standards that are based mostly on the most recent approved voluntary voting system guidelines. The problem is that the most current standards were already out of date by the time they were approved. The stagnation is partially responsible for the stagnation of the voting system industry. Why? Voting system vendors are for-profit companies. They have boards of directors and investors to answer to. They are not going to spend a lot of research and development capital creating voting machines to a standard that will change soon. So instead, they develop new machines, and I put that in quotation marks, to the old standards. And as best practices emerge to improve security, we often find ourselves hampered by tech that just hasn't caught up to the security standards. So how do we change this? The answer, of course, is new standards. As a recent addition to the TGDC, I was not part of the team that developed the high-level guidelines that will provide for better flexibility for future standards. I remain, however, part of the Standards Board that unanimously supported those standards, along with the enumerated assertions that followed. I am also on record as having reservations about some of the things being proposed in the new standards. As a local election official, I am charged with conducting the elections in my county, not only with security in mind, but also with the realities of the media-driven political system in which I must operate. The task remains to strike that perfect balance between the operational realities and the desire for a secure system. As I have said on many different occasions to a lot of different audiences, we can build a system that is 99.9% secure, but no voter will be able to get within five miles of it to use it. The accessibility and usability of the voting system is every bit as important as the security. A secure system that nobody can use doesn't do anybody any good. And Commissioners, again, thank you for having me today and for being on this panel and to my fellow panelists for their remarks, and I look forward to your questions and the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Lux. And with that conclusion of those comments, we will turn to questions and answers. Just to flag, I will keep a stopwatch here at home, try to start with about five minutes per commissioner as a first round, and then we will see where we are as far as what time permits. So with that, I would certainly like to ask Mr. Lux, you know, you mentioned that you had come to the TGDC after the principles and guidelines, but were certainly a part of the requirements. Can you talk about some of what went into that, some of the conversations we had?
Well, I mean, the conversations were very in-depth, of course. Some of it much more technical, a lot of it guided by the good folks from NIST, who, of course, have, you know, for them, security is the ultimate or penultimate focus for a lot of this, and that's where, you know, we kind of butted heads because, you know, I know that, I mean, we, we're all aware that perhaps, you know, motoring in results at the end of the night is not the most secure way to do it. But, you know, with the right checks and balances in place, it can be as secure as anything else that we do. But I was able to concede that point when we, when we had a very rich discussion about, you know, can we find a air gap solution that will still allow for the same things? A lot of our frustration at the TGDC level was driven by what Mr. Piper already mentioned, and that is, we had the high-level assertions and guidelines that were designed by the TGDC then, which I was not on, to provide better flexibility, to make that the standard and that the actual test assertions be the things that just made those other things happen that could be changed as technology changed and evolved and at the pace that it, that it does. And so that's, I mean, and I see it every day. I get a security alert from one of the ISAXs about router software, but I can't go update the router software on my election management system because that patch has to come through the state after having gone through testing and verification by the Bureau of Voting System Certification before I can install it. And so I am anywhere from eight to 12 months behind on those types of security patches, which, for all the rest of the equipment in my office, I can do right away. And so that drove a lot of the discussion, as I recall, from all of the meetings that I attended.
You think, or just, just to go off of that, I mean, you know, again, as we think about how to make this better, obviously, much of the process is outlined in HAVA. I think we've been exploring different ways, as Mr. Piper mentioned, to potentially speed things up. But again, thinking about, you know, we went through, I believe, six virtual hearings somewhat like this or teleconferences, in addition to the in-person meeting, and obviously drilling down into the weeds on things like end-to-end verification. I mean, is that, is that, I mean, are, do you believe that end-to-end cryptographic systems are something that should be considered in a vacuum, sort of without the benefit of the expertise that we had in the room for those TGDC meetings?
Well, again, you know, it's striking a balance between how you operate and how you have to operate in a real-world environment. As I often joke, you know, if we could get people out of the voting process, it would all go a lot smoother because people do things that we do not expect. And so it always adds a layer to everything you have to do. And the accessibility, as Commissioner McCormick mentioned, is also very, very important because you have people that, you know, you have to take into consideration their accessibility, so we can't ratchet everything down for security to the point that we make things not accessible for other people.
Thank you very much. To be conscious of time, I'll save my remaining questions to hopefully the next round. Vice Chair Palmer, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question, a little bit of a comment then a question. It's for Mr. Piper, Commissioner Piper. You know, you talked a little bit about how you would be okay for staff members of the EAC sort of approving different requirements and test assertions for the high-level guidelines. And, you know, that's a very sensitive issue because how would you treat that in Virginia, for example? I mean, I'm sure that you would not necessarily have a staff member approve those changes. It would, it would have to be following the code of Virginia, plus it would go to your board, and it would be have to be approved by you. So how would you, how, do you want us to be a leader in the community by adopting this new sort of format? Or, you know, just try to follow how the states do their certification programs? I don't know of any state that allows, you know, their staff members to adopt, you know, requirements to match principles and guidelines.
Well, I, thank you for your question. And actually, in the latest round of certification requirements, we, we did ask for a little flexibility in working with the vendors when de minimis changes are made to equipment, to, to ensure that we have some flexibility to avoid what Mr. Lux was discussing, an issue where we have a patch that needs to be made, but it takes, you know, thousands of dollars to test the equipment and retest and recertify. So the board in our case did provide a little bit more flexibility to staff to determine when a change needs to be made, whether it needs to go to a full testing or can go through just a de minimis change.
Well, I hope to talk a little bit more with you about that issue. Maybe there's, maybe there's some more work that we can do on the de minimis side as, as the Commonwealth has done. Paul, you know, as a local election official, I think you, you talked a little bit about some of the, you know, your reservations about some of the VVSG, the draft that we have in front of us. Are there any aspects or other reservations that you would encourage local election officials to review closely and provide comment? There's a lot going on this year, but if there was, you know, if there are particular issues that you had reservations that, that we at the EAC and our experts or the local election officials should look at, please advise us.
Well, certainly, you know, how the results get from polling places are important, and the timeliness of those results are driven by the media frenzy that has, for all intents and purposes over the years, been allowed to get progressively worse in their demand for immediate results. If everyone would just calm down and let us get the work done, we'll have the results for you, and they'll be accurate and they'll be safe. But they don't want that. They want it right now, today, you know, 20 minutes after the polls close. Why don't you know what the results are? And since no one is willing to tell the media to back off and let us do our work, then we've got to do what we have to do. We've been using modems, which, back when they were landline modems. And I mean, again, I'm not a security expert to the level of the folks at NIST, so I'll defer it to them. But, you know, landline phones, probably a little bit more secure, certainly than cellular technology. As the cellular technology evolved, we had to get away from landlines because everybody started digitizing their phone lines, and that digit, that digitizing of those phone lines was burning out the old analog modems and destroying the equipment, so we had to stop doing that. For some of us, that led to simply retooling the process. So I was able to have drop points where we had one good analog line that I could bring all of the equipment to from a 10 precinct radius and upload and get the results in a little less timely than doing it precinct by precinct, but still pretty good. And with the advent of cellular technology inside, we were able to expedite that process. Now, is cellular technology safe? Well, that's where me and NIST started to butt heads. So I'm not saying that it's secure, but I'm saying that the processes that we have in place help make it more secure than simply taking the results that come motoring in and never doing any cross-checking, ballot verification, totals checking with machine tapes, et cetera. Now, again, the compromise we came up with was, you know, if, if, if we could create something that was air gapped, that could be, you could remove the media from the voting machine and put it in to something else that would then transmit it would be better, and that's, that's true. But again, it comes down to timeliness. It comes down to the ability to train poll workers to perform ever-increasingly complex tasks, which can be a challenge in some cases. Much easier to press a button that says transmit the results and get the results transmitted. But at the end of the day, again, the processes that we have on the backend, verifying the totals from machine to machine that were uploaded into the system before things get certified, verifying the ballot accounting to make sure that the number of ballots, the actual physical pieces of paper in our case that went through a tabulator are accounted for so that we know there's no ballot totals in there that aren't, that aren't supposed to be there. All of those processes are what helps secure that transmission. And again, if we weren't being driven to have the results yesterday on election night, it wouldn't be as big of a deal. I mean, look at the state of California. They've got 30 days to certify their election, and no one ever says, how come California can't get their election results in? Well, because they have 30 days to get their election results in. The rest of us aren't given that level of time to take our time and make sure we get it right. And that's just the reality of the, of the way things are situated in their state versus ours. But we've just allowed the media and the political parties to drive the desire for the data to be sooner, which drives us to processes that some people don't find secure.
Vice Chairman Palmer, I believe we'll have additional time, but just in the interest, can I move to Commissioner Hicks?
Mr. Chair, that's fine.
Commissioner Hicks, do you have a questions you'd like to ask?
Yes, I do. Thank you. First, I want to thank you again because I think that one point that's been lost in our discussion here is that with the global pandemic, the EAC could easily have been sitting around and not moving forward at all with the VVSG. I know this is a slow process, and I know that it's very frustrating. And I share in the frustration that has been, that's been said today as well because I think there are some other things that we could be moving forward with. But I think that, you know, again, I want to give you praise for, for holding this hearing, and hopefully we can have the hearing in the next few weeks. And then the Standards Board and Board of Advisors will have an opportunity to, to see our videos and then give their feedback as well so we can move forward with the process. And then at the, hopefully, everyone will have their comments in by June 22nd so that we can move forward with those as well. I think of it as, this has been a long tedious process, but I, you know, do have a few questions that I wanted to ask. One is, you know, this could go for, actually, I wanted to talk to Lance a little bit with this. You know, knowing that Lance has been in Chicago for a number of years, and I'm hoping that this is not your last dance with elections overall. So, but I think that one of the things is, in the new VVSG 2.0, how has the process been different for you in seeing how things are evolving from, from previous iterations of this?
Thank you so much for asking me, but I'd just let you know that, yes, after November, that's my last dance. I was supposed to retire after this primary. My board in their wisdom said, Lance, would you stay on through November? And I agreed to do it. So, yes, like I said, this will be the hardest election we'll ever have because this will be my last one. Just a couple of things I'd like to say real fast. You talk about the elections, about the media's request is pushing us to get the election results out that day, that night. We are able to do that. We do go through modems and then, but that, the media knows that's unofficial totals at that time. Then we do a canvas. We work for 20 days to get all the, the information put together and send it out again. So I'm sure that once we certify the election, everything has been counted, it's been gone over several times, and we've done this many years. And we've done this many years. We were the first ones in the United States to use modems and we've been perfecting it ever since. We use actually hard, direct lines into the system right now. We're not relying on modems. We do a, a follow-up. We send after, we have 2,006 nine precincts after we do that, the transmission on election night, then we go back and we actually run those items again through a landline again. So we're, we're running those through twice and getting certified. So I feel comfortable that the elections are, are out and are accurate. And I'm sorry, that wasn't your question you asked me, but I had to, I had to say that, you know, yes, we do give out election results at night. It's something that is pushed. The media doesn't understand, local politicians don't understand. And with the kind of problems that the, the history of the Chicago board, there's no way we're going to be holding back any election results. We got to get them out that night.
Oh, I would go on.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. Well, I would say that I think that it's, one of the questions I would want to ask you since you are saying that this is your last election. What sort of areas would you identify for our testing and certification program that can be improved upon to better help you and the other administrators?
I just want to, the, the, what I'd like to really focus on is accessibility. You know, language accessibility, feeling, physical accessibility to the voting. There's a large population out there that has, has issues. You know that I've been big on language accessibility and accessibility to people with disabilities that needs to have to be filled. And it's something that the, the voluntary voting system guideline is, is providing a benchmark for that. And it's up to the, the manufacturers to follow that. So I think it's something that is being worked on. I think we were almost there, not 100% right now, but we're almost there. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
No, it did, it did.
Commissioner Hicks, if we could move on for now, thank you. Commissioner McCormick, if you want to go ahead with any questions? You are muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Lux, you've indicated we need to strike a balance between the operational realities and the desire for a secure system. In light of the necessity of finding that balance, is it your opinion that we should revisit these guidelines on a more regular basis? And will doing that affect the reliability and consistency of the guidelines in the several year development timeline of new machines by the manufacturers?
Well, and, and for that answer, I will defer to the comments that Mr. Piper made. And that is, you know, there, there has to be, with the ever-changing security environment we find ourselves in, a way to be more agile. And that was, of course, the original intent behind all of the, the high level assertions and the, and the points that came under them was in an attempt to make the guidelines themselves a, a living, breathing document so that the assertions, the actual physical testings that are written to test the equipment against could change so long as it was meeting those guidelines. By doing it the way we're doing it now, we're kind of back in the same boat where when one thing changes, we're going to have to go through a, a heavy process of heavy lifting to change even the smallest things that need to be changed as new technology develops. What are those new technologies going to be? We don't really know. If we knew, then we could write the standards now to cover those, but obviously we can't. So it really just becomes, again, when I say strike a balance between security and accessibility, you know, we can lock down the security of these voting systems such that they become completely unusable. We have a darn secure system and that'd be great, but if nobody can use it, how have we helped the electorate? And the answer is we haven't. And so having a system in place, whether it's an annual review, whether it's as, as Christopher mentioned, which is allowing, you know, the, the staff who are already tasked with the, the, the testing of the voting equipment and the, as things change, the tweaking of that, whatever it takes so that we have a, a more agile process is really what's important.
So let me follow up then with Mr. Piper. Is there a difference? Can we find a difference between these de minimis security patches and the more robust requirements that isn't going to affect the man, your manufacturers and how they approach development of the systems? I mean, if it's a moving target, it's hard for them to develop something. And I, I just, I want to make sure we can strike that balance if we go down that road.
Yeah, I understand. I think, and thank you for the question. I think that, first of all, being more agile and them understanding that, that the, the guidelines and the requirements will be changing often or, or more often, obviously, than they have been, then they can work to build a, a process by which they can make these changes and they can update to the requirements on a more regular basis. I think that the, the problem we see more than anything right now is, you know, the path, the, the updates that they're making to the system, or they refuse to make updates to the system because, because it's, 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 it's not required or the, in like in our case, it would maybe require a whole new certification process to go through. And so I think that if the guidelines and the requirements are regularly updated, then the, the vendor community and, and even at the state level, our community will begin to work through the process of being more agile ourselves and, and, and assist, being ready to adapt on a more regular basis.
Yeah, I guess the problem is that, you know, when you're in the manufacturing process and the logistics of all that and the supply chain, that's difficult to maneuver when the target's moving. And if, like, for example, we were told that by one manufacturer, it took them a couple, several years to change the size of an oval on their machine. And that is, you know, concerning to me that we have to take that long to make a change in a system. And I'm just not sure how we navigate that. And I, and I don't believe the principles and guidelines alone are enough for them to develop a system by. I think they need to have the actual requirements. So I'm just asking how we can navigate those concerns?
I, I, I go back to the point of, I, I believe that if, if the, at the federal level and at the state level, we were able to, we are, we are being agile with our updates and becoming more responsive to security issues, as Mr. Lux pointed out. Right now, we're moving so slow at this, at the speed of molasses in January, as my dad said. Then we have an issue. If we adapt and become agile, I guarantee you the community will follow, the technology will follow in that respect. Right now, there's no incentive for them to.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to talk to the vendors and see what kind of flexibility that they can tell us they have in, in their process. And I think that would be important for all of us to know. Director Goff, as you know, writing new guidelines takes time, as this process has taken time. We need to follow the process set out in law, specifically HAVA. And it takes time for these new systems to be developed and brought to market, as I mentioned. Well, you may be retiring and, and after November, can you tell us how the timelines involved may impact Chicago's plans for purchasing new systems over the next several years?
Lance, you're muted.
Okay, there we go.
He's still muted.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The city of Chicago purchased new voting equipment and we used it for the first time this primary election. We spent $18 million getting a new system. We have, we used it very successfully this last election, but there are some changes we need to make. Fortunately that we go through our state board of election who will, we are updating to get a new certification on the equipment to use it for November. So we're going through a state board, which will probably take the next several months to get done before the November election. I know it's six months away. We should, hopefully with the changes that we're asking for, the state board will be able to get that to us in a couple of months. I'm very pleased with the work that we're doing with the state board. Any updates or changes that we have, they've been very successful in getting those completed. Anything major that has to come from the federal government and that's what we're looking to you, the EAC, to help us get these new guidelines in place so we can update our equipment. So, like I said, we, we purchased, we're not going to purchase any equipment very soon after another $18 million. The city is with this panderic pandemic is, put a strain on everybody's finances, especially the city of Chicago. So I think what we'll be doing, we will make the equipment that we have work, it's working well. We're be making changes constantly to it through the state board of election. Hopefully we'll be submitting that stuff to the federal government also.
Thank you, Director Goff. Mr. Chairman, do I have time for one quick follow-up with Mr. Goff?
Absolutely. And we can maybe do reverse order if you want.
Okay. I, I just curious how long you bought, you said you bought new equipment last year for $18 million. How, how long do you expect that equipment to last?
I expected to last, in, in the, our agreement with the company, we have a 10-year agreement with the company on this equipment. So it's going to last more than 10 years. The last equipment that we purchased lasted over 16 years. So I think we have a good 10 years out of this equipment.
Good to know. Thank you very much, Director Goff. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Well, we've got time for another quick round, I think. So I'll start off with just a couple of quick questions. Certainly, you know, we've heard the concerns around the stagnation and, you know, we share those concerns. Obviously, there are, there are pieces that, that relate to HAVA. There are certainly the warm issues over the years. I think what we're looking at is how we can get these requirements done so that manufacturers can start building the next generation of equipment. And, and this question will be for everyone. You know, as you look at these requirements, do you have any doubts that a machine built to these requirements would be more user-friendly, more secure and more accessible than the equipment on the market today? Commissioner Piper, if you want to start off?
I mean, I think it's a, thank you. And I think it's a, a start. I think when we're talking about the high level requirements and certainly they're, they're helpful. It's, it's the nitty gritty requirements that, that really going to answer some of those more pressing questions and, and, but certainly getting these approved and, and out is a, is a, is a good start.
Right. Mr. Lux?
I, I would say that, that realistically, you know, look at, I would talk to the vendors specifically and say, you know, given this, you know, how long is it going to take you to either adapt your existing certified systems to meet these new standards or to develop completely new systems to meet these standards? Because they're the ones that know. So again, you know, having, understand that, that going down into the weeds, you know, I know that there's a lot of stuff that's in the standards that I look at my current equipment and I go, yeah, it's not going to do it. And we just bought it in 2016. And again, with about a 10-year lifecycle, I shouldn't be looking for new equipment before 2026 and probably more like 2027 because we can go do it another election year. But, you know, again, can they update what I currently have to, to better meet the new standards or to improve security or accessibility? Those are all questions for the vendors. But I believe getting the standards out is, of course, and that was why I was happy to vote, even with my reservations, to move the process along to get the standards in the hand, in the hands of the, of the Standards Board and the, and the Board of Directors.
And that comments a nice segue to our May 20th hearing with the vendors and labs. But just to follow up on that, Mr. Goff, do you believe that, that a voting system built under these new requirements would be more accessible, more secure and more voter-friendly than what we've seen before?
Oh, yes, I do. In fact, we're waiting for the new standard so I can talk to our vendor and put some upgrades that are needed into the system. So yes, I, I have no doubt about the, having a new system set up, a new guidelines that we will be able to make that and make it easier and more accessible. You know, we have to look at how, how our poll workers set up the equipment. It's getting easier and easier right now for our poll workers and I hope it continues.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Palmer, would you like to ask an additional question or two?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's really the questions for everyone. I know, Paul, I gave you the opportunity to talk about what some of your other issues were that you think local boards or local election officials should look at. I want to give that opportunity to Commissioner Piper and Lance. Are there any particular aspects of the requirements that you think our advisory boards and our EAC staff should look at, including us, on, on, before adoption?
I, I'm, I don't, nothing specific that comes to my mind at the moment. I, I think, you know, unfortunately, I'm going to have to hammer home again, just, just the need to get it done. I am, as I mentioned in, in my opening statement, biggest pushback I've gotten is, is that, you know, if you're going to require more than the federal standards, then we're going to have a hard time. And I, so in that case, the states and I think the locals need the, the, the federal government to lead in this area and that will help us in ensuring that we have, you know, the, the equipment we need to ensure security and accessibility.
Mr. Goff?
Yes, just, I, I think the guidelines that you have in place, once those get out, I think will, should make it a lot easier for the, the public to vote and give them more security, secure that their vote is being counted. There's always naysayers out there about voting and what we're trying to do and hope with the federal government's help, that you'll be able to squash those, those rumors and those naysayers. So I think that once it's adopted and passed out, I think the vendors will take this and run with it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Palmer, Commissioner Hicks, do you have?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. We, we have the one point, we voted and, and approved 1.1 in March of 2015. My question is, even though each of you have purchased new voting equipment since then, did you certify that equipment to those standards?
Oh, hello. Yes, yes, we did. But we've also met with the vendors about making sure, and they knew what was in some of these meetings that we talked about security and made those available to them and had them upgrade the equipment at the same time. So yes, I feel that they will be able to adapt with the new system.
And, and I believe our equipment, Commissioner Hicks, in Florida that I purchased in 2016 was certified. I think Florida had updated its standards after 1.0, but I don't believe they ever got around to updating the Florida standard to the two-point, to the one, was it, whatever the one in the middle is?
1.1.
Yes, I've lost track. I was bad at math anyway.
That's why I got into social sciences because I'm terrible at math. But, uh, yeah, so Virginia updated its standards to 1.1. Some, some of those pieces had to be relaxed simply because we were informed from the vendor community that, that they couldn't be done. But we did update our certification standards to mostly 1.1.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner McCormick. Any follow-up? Thank you, Commissioner McCormick. Any final question?
So this is for Commissioner Piper. You mentioned that just before he became Commissioner of Elections, Virginia decertified a voting system from use in the Commonwealth. Can you tell me how the EAC's voluntary voting systems guidelines may have impacted that decision and the selection of equipment to replace those systems?
Well, of course, I wasn't there at the time, but, you know, the, in, the the concern really came from the ability to that, that this, this, the systems we were using at the time weren't secure. And I believe, if I remember correctly, and I, I don't, I hate to do this, but if I remember correctly, those systems had not, I mean, they were certified under standards that I think even before Commissioner Palmer was secretary. And so we had since updated the standards to the, you know, somewhat relaxed one point one standards. And that played into it quite a bit, yes.
Thank you. Do I have time for one more question, one more round? Chairman?
Yes, one quick one.
So one quick one for all of you. Will the states need to revise election policies to use VVSG two point O?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, they will. Yes.
Thank you very much. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner McCormick, and thank you to all of our speakers for joining us in this discussion. I now like to turn things over to Vice Chairman Don Palmer as we begin panel two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We at DAC recognize the importance of having a balance between accessible and secure voting systems in voting equipment that incorporates the latest technologies. The VVSG program makes tries to achieve that balance, but we know there's still improvements to be made, additional issues to be considered, and we are dedicated to continue working toward that goal. This panel is focused on addressing this challenge, and I'd like to introduce our speakers. Our first speaker is Sachin Pavitron from Utah State University, Director of Policy, a public member of the U.S. Access Board, and I believe a member of our Board of Advisors. Juan Gilbert, Andrew, who is with the Andrew Banks family, preeminence endowed professor and chair of the Herbert Wortham College of Engineering, the University of Florida. Our next panelist is Maurice Turner, Senior Advisor to the Executive Director of the U.S. Elections Commission, and Dan Wallach, Professor, Department of Computer Science, Rice University. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and, starting with Sachin, and then we'll just go down in order of Mr. Gilbert, then Mr. Turner, and, and Mr. Wallach for your opening statements. Go ahead and proceed.
Thank, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in the hearing today. My name is Sachin Pavitron. I'm a public member of the U.S. Access Board, and the U.S. Access Board is a federal, independent federal agency that focuses on access for people with disabilities, and we mainly focus on Americans with Disabilities Act and the Section Five Way Rehabilitation Act and other laws that impact people with disabilities in the various aspects and infrastructures that we find ourselves in this country. I've, I've been part of the Board of Advisors and also the TGDC for the last couple of years, and I've been fortunate to be part of these great colleagues of mine who has been part of this process of the VVSG two point O. And I, first of all, want to recognize the hard work that the staff at the EAC has put forward in making this happen. And also, I do want to recognize that all you commissioners, the importance that you weigh in when it comes to accessibility. I also want to recognize the work that the NIST staff has put into when it comes to accessibility. With that said, I do want to talk about how VVSG two point O addresses accessibility in comparison to security. In, in my personal opinion, and many of my colleagues would agree, that, you know, security definitely has had a significant improvement in VVSG two point O, accessibility as well, has had improvements been made in this VVSG two point O. I would say accessibility was not equally in par with how the improvement was done for security. What I mean by that is that there has been improvements made in accessibility, but not to the level how importance was weighed for the security. There's been improvements, if you look at the VVSG two point O, you know, principle eight, there's about four sections and fourteen sub-sections. This is the section, these are the sections that the advocates in the disability community are more interested in. And there are improvements from the last version where, you know, speak out, speech outputs is, is included. There's, there's aspects for switch controls where people who are using different switch controls could use voting equipment. And there's also requirements for voting manufacturers to have good descriptions for, you know, what accessibility has been built in that, and I believe that's indicated in Section Five. All that is well and good with, with what we find ourselves right now in the current pandemic. This, this guidelines really does not help people with disabilities in any way with what we are facing right now. Most states are going into mail-in voting or some sort of remote voting of some sort, and VVSG two point O does not really address that. And that, that is a disadvantage for people with disabilities, and with millions of us who are wanting to vote. I, you know, someone like myself who is blind will be limited in how we can participate in, in elections coming forward. None of us know what elections are going to look like going forward, even this general elections coming up in November. It is, it's unfortunate that VVSG two point O, although it has improved accessibility, it has already limited us with what, with the situation we find ourselves. There are a lot of arguments because of security. Often, security trumps accessibility and accessibility kind of takes a back, backseat in conversations, which almost, which limits many of us who are disabled, who are wanting to vote. The argument of different ways of accessing voting equipments, but if remote voting was an option, it, it limits improvement in technology and advancement in technology. You know, it, it also surprises me when internet-based voting, remote voting is always pushed back because of security when we find ourselves using for all our financial transactions and the things that we do on a daily basis with banking and other activities. Security is, you know, that's, that, that aspect of it is okay, but when it comes to elections and voting, we limit ourselves what the capability that technology can bring us. One of the biggest, one of the biggest limitations that people with disabilities face is transportation. Having remote voting available makes people with disabilities participate more independently and privately, which is not, which is not recognized in this VVSG two point O. And with, like I said earlier, with the current pandemic, the conversation changes what it's going to look like. I, I, you know, I appreciate the comments that my colleague and from the previous panel, Paul Lux, you know, the comments he made, you know, you can make a system very secure and then make it also useless to many of us. I'm kind of paraphrasing it, but make it useless for many of us who are disabled. And I really do want to applaud for the work that has been done to advance accessibility, but I also want to recognize we have a long way to go. And we also need to take into mind what does our current situation that we find ourselves, and what does that mean for people with disabilities when a general election comes around and other elections in the future? Because we know things are going to change, and if we don't take this into consideration and really address remote voting and other opportunities for people with disabilities, we will find ourselves limiting disabled people like myself from participating in the future. Thank you. That's all I have for my comments, and that would be a real book for questions.
Mr. Gilbert, go ahead.
Thanks, Commissioner Palmer. I have a few comments. I'm going to speak directly to the VVSG two point O things that I observe, and I look forward to engaging and answering questions. Let me begin by saying I think this is an important improvement over the current VVSG. I like the idea that it gives high-level principles that need to be achieved versus specific specifications. It describes abilities the voting system must have versus detailed abilities. This is a good, this is good for innovation in voting systems, and because it's not overly prescriptive, and it allows for innovation. With that said, let me speak to some specific points. I like the fact that it prohibits external network connections to computers for voting systems. And I want to be clear about this. I'm going to be very clear about this. There is no known way to mankind on earth to secure a digital ballot. It is impossible to do that with current technology. You cannot secure a digital ballot. And I don't care if it's end-to-end, I don't care if it's encrypted, I don't care how you do it. If it's digital, it can be manipulated or deleted, so you cannot secure an election with a digital ballot with current technology. Now, I think it's worth doing research to figure out how to do that, but it's impossible right now. Next, I say that although VVSG two point O doesn't directly address remote ballot marking systems, it at least has a statement regarding the accessibility of these systems. I think it could go further. But as our previous panelists mentioned, I think this is important, and it's going to be a part of voting moving forward undoubtedly. I appreciate the requirement for public release of barcode information, and the work we've done for many years, we have demonstrated this repeatedly. Barcodes, if they're going to be used, there's no need to encrypt them. The principle four point four, it speaks to COTS commercial off-the-shelf devices that can be used if they meet applicable VVSG requirements. This is important. This is another feature that vendors could, it could open the market for additional vendors, and it could also lower costs. I, I think this is another area that we'll see growth in. And again, we've worked in this area for years using COTS in elections. Principle five, all voters can access and use the voting system regardless of their abilities. This implements universal design, which is good for accessibility, privacy, and security. It is important to note that if you have a, a machine or a technology just for people with disabilities, that is a problem because you make, you give an easier target, and if those voters exceed the margin of victory, you can definitely change the outcome of the election. And we can talk more about that later. Under principle seven point three, I want to make a recommendation, undervotes must be allowed by scanners. I understand that. But I want, I think we should recommend that what you need is instead of the ability to leave all options blank, add one for none of the above. If you don't mark an oval, it's an opportunity for what I call an undervote hack, where someone could just fill in the oval later, and no one would ever know. Principle eight includes usability tests with voters and election workers. I think that is good, and I'd like to see that. That is an improvement. Principle nine requires software independence. I'm in favor of that. I think that is good, and it does not have to impede accessibility. Under principle nine, I want to say that paperless end-to-end cryptographic voting systems are not software-independent. End-to-end cryptographic systems that are paperless can be hacked in a way to, for example, remove the encrypted files. The impression is that it's encrypted, so you can't modify the outcome of an election. In less than ten characters, I can delete all the files. And now you cannot undetectably recover, you can't recover anything about the election. You have to redo it. Principle five requires that the end-to-end systems be accessible. I'm glad to see that because I have yet to see a, an accessible end-to-end system, so I like this requirement. And again, with that principle eight requiring usability tests, these are good. As we are in this COVID nineteen part of history, it's shown us that using our own device may be necessary to protect voters. So I think that's a, a good part of VVSG two point O. I also noticed that principle seven point two allows voters to use speeches input, which we have done for years in our work with Prime Three. A hands-free voting experience is more valuable now than ever before. We've done that privately and securely, so we know how to do that. In summary, there is no known way to secure a digital ballot with current technology. VVSG two point O is an improvement. I am happy to see this moving forward. I think a regular review of VVSG is necessary. In response to Commissioner McCormick's earlier question to the previous panel, the vendors will adapt, and they have already adapted. If, if the vendors are not adapting to developing security threats, much more is at risk for them than just the voting machines. So in-house, they have to adapt naturally anyway. And I would say that the current state of new technology, in particular ballot marking devices, are not far off from complying with VVSG two point O. So I'm confident that this could be accomplished with the vendors. But again, ask them directly, but I am confident they could meet VVSG two point O. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Turner?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Maurice Turner. While I'm currently an EAC staff member, acting as senior advisor to the executive director, my comments at today's hearing are based on my experience over the previous two years while I was at the Center for Democracy and Technology. There, I was a senior technologist and later deputy director of the Internet Architecture Project. My primary responsibility was leading the center's election privacy and security project. CDT has a long history of engaging with stakeholders during standards development processes hosted by organizations and consortiums that many people have never even heard of, but are really impacted by. The importance of engagement at the early stages of standards development allows for a wider diversity of perspectives to be considered throughout a robust discussion process. What we have learned countless times is that principles such as security and accessibility cannot be afterthoughts and simply added on later. To that end, CDT prioritized participating in the VVSG two point O development process through direct engagement. CDT's former chief technologist, Joe Hall, testified before the commission during the VVSG public hearing in Maine. He advocated for the flexibility of the current principles requirements approach, the limits to vendors being able to certify new systems against old requirements, improving vulnerability handling, striving for a common data format, broadening the scope of those systems that are covered by VVSG, and standardizing the procedural aspects of modern voting technologies. I also participated in EAC's two thousand and twenty Elections Disability Accessibility and Security Forum in February to discuss the security and accessibility considerations of vote-by-mail and electronic ballot delivery systems. For example, BMDs at polling places have flexible capabilities such as adjustable text size, multilingual audio, and personal input device interfaces that allow voters with disabilities the opportunity to interact with the same ballot as other voters. Those same devices have vulnerabilities that adversaries can exploit, resulting in ballots that can be changed or even destroyed. This is where security researchers play a critical role. VVSG two point O helps mitigate the risk so that the benefits can be realized by all voters. I also contributed to the NIST Cybersecurity Public Working Group. Stakeholders from multiple sectors representing different perspectives were able to get into the nitty-gritty details of the ramifications likely to result from high-level requirement changes. Discussions about technologies such as barcodes and wireless stretched on for months because there were compelling arguments about the impacts and the benefits associated with their use and consideration for other alternatives. It was exactly the type of deliberation that should take place before vendors build the approved requirements and standards. It was exactly the type of deliberation that should take place before vendors build the approved requirements and standards. I'm satisfied with the outcome of the process, given the constraints over which components of the voting process were determined to be within the scope. Intense pressure has been placed on all levels of government to secure the vote. Unfortunately, this has also placed an opposing pressure on making ballots more accessible to all voters. For the millions of voters with visual, mobility, cognitive and other disabilities, that means relying on accommodations that are often accomplished through digital technologies. These technologies that enable independence for disabled voters will become more commonplace among non disabled voters. Think of technologies like augmented reality and always on five G data connections becoming integrated into our everyday devices of the future. In the same way that screens, microphones and cameras are more prevalent today than there were, than they were ten to fifteen years ago. I like to think of a scenario where voter turnout has increased significantly, even doubled in some jurisdictions over the next decade. Because that means that we would likely use different forms of voting to spur that level of turnout. Can the current systems and standards withstand that extra turnout and the associated risks? Well, I hope that the V V S G two point O principles can be effective in a way that helps set a clear boundary of security and accessibility. Guidelines while also encouraging vendors to be able to rapidly support their state and local election officials as their customers.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wallack.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Dan Wallack. I'm happy to test, pleased to be testifying to you today. I'm a professor in the Department of Computer Science at Rice University and I'm also a Rice scholar at the Baker Institute for Public Policy. And I serve as the I triple E representative to the T G D C. So first off, I want to strongly agree with Dr. Gilbert's opening comments. The V V S G two point O describes principles that improve our voting systems without being overly prescriptive in how a voting system should be implemented. This is a hugely valuable change of direction that will lead to voting systems that are better in every dimension. But today I want to address security related aspects of the V V S G two point O. First, I want to talk about best practices. So the V V S G two point O defines terms like software independence and auditability. So elections will be verifiable without being required to trust the correctness of the software. This also implies the use of paper records, whether marked by hand or by a ballot marking device and thus verified by the voter. There are many things security experts will argue about. We're really good at that. But everybody agrees that paperless electronic voting machines should be retired and the V V S G two point O finally gets us there. Similarly, networking has been very controversial with significant security vulnerabilities discovered in the use of modems in older voting systems. The newer requirements are an important step in the right direction. And lastly, I want to talk about best practices that the V V S G two point O has a lot to say about software engineering techniques. To be, that are best practices, things like address based layout randomization and data execution prevention. These are all features that you use when you're engineering software that you want to be more robust against attacks. So I'm pleased that these industry best practices are now part of the V V S G. The next thing I want to talk about is agility. So in the previous panel, we had, there was some discussion about de minimis changes. This is the idea that if we're fixing a security bug or even just a regular bug bug or if we're changing the size of ovals on the screen or what have you. That these small changes should not require a heavyweight recertification process. And what this means for security is that we, security experts know that there's no such thing as building a perfectly secure system out of the box on day one. Security is a process wherein you discover problems, you fix them, you push the changes and you repeat. And so that is a very important change that the V V S G two point O process will enable. The last thing I want to talk about is end to end or E to E encryption. This has been a topic of research in the, in the community for over two decades. And there are high profile projects, including Microsoft's Election Guard, that are looking to help get these techniques. Out of the research literature and into commercial practice in real voting systems. End to end cryptography can do many different things, but probably the, the headliners are that. It allows the public to be able to verify that their vote was tabulated as it was cast and that it was recorded. As it was cast. There are lots and lots of technical details and complicated math that we don't need to talk about here. The high level point though is that we can gain increased trust that the outcome of our elections are correct. Rather than being required to trust election officials, we can verify election officials did their job correctly. With math, which is really an important. I mean, I'm going to argue that really the next decade of innovation in voting systems is going to be all about end to end cryptography. And the V V S G two point O has enough definition and enough concept and enough. Of, of everything that we need in order to, to make this a reality. Beyond that, I'm happy to take questions.
I'd like to thank the panelists for your comments. Now we're going to move to the question and answer part. Part, portion of the hearing and I'll provide the first question. You know, I know most of you talked a little bit about some of your analysis of the V V S G draft that we have. So this is a question for all of you. And then I may make more specific one before I move on to the other commissioners. In your review of the accessibility and security requirements of two point O. What are the one to two specific issues that perhaps we as commissioners or staff should. And the boards that are going to be meeting later on this, the summer. What issue should they scrutinize more closely and understand and provide comment on? And we'll just go in the same order that we did for the, for the comments.
Thank you. This, this is Sachin Paratun. I, I think going back to my, the comments I made earlier. It's, it's what, how, how does accessibility really play out in, in situations that we are, we find ourselves in right now? I know V V S G two point O, it did not address it, but what, why can we, why can't we go further? Because we know where the current scenario is going to take us. Is, is that something that we could get more emphasis on when it comes to, you know, remote, remote ballot marking devices? What can we do to address that? Because I, I feel like if we just skip that. This, it might limit many of us.
Well, that's definitely something we should look at. I think that, you know, we've been looking at non voting election systems review of review of that. Also, obviously this was an issue the boards looked at at the scope of the V V S G. I'm, you know, I'm prepared to talk and discuss, you know, how, how we can help in sort of reviewing those systems. Do we have any, I'd like to go on to. Miss, to Dr. Gilbert and the rest of the panel on any issue, any specific issues we should address.
That would be the same one for me, remote ballot marking. And I would give guidance to say to talk to the state of Ohio. They actually had a certification process in place for remote ballot marking systems. And with that, I'd add the, the requirement that they be stateless. In other words, this is something we worked on in our work. Where if Professor Wallack is going to use a remote ballot marking system. When he opens it in his browser, he should be able to unplug his computer from the internet at that moment in time, mark his ballot and print it. So in other words, it doesn't store any information about him or his selections back on the server. If he can disconnect and be stateless at that point, then I think that's a big step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallack, do you have any comments on the general question and perhaps the issue we're talking about here? Of being the remote ballot marking. Was this an issue that was addressed? The scope, whether or not, and, and what, how do you come down on that issue?
So let's see, where, I don't have specific opinions about the, about how much we should or shouldn't talk about both. Remote ballot marking. Instead, I want to move to a slightly higher level point, which is something that was brought up in the first panel. Which is the need to understand that the V V S G two point O shouldn't be fixed in time for another decade. But that we need the ability to make changes as we discover we need them. Just like we need that to make software secure. We know that we can't get software right on day one. It's really the same thing with the V V S G two point O. Understanding that we need that the process for the V V S G to be amended. It should, we shouldn't have to wait another decade to get two point one or whatever it's called. And to the extent that we recognize that we need better regulation for. Ballot marking at home or other things, if and when we need them, we need a process that makes it possible to get to V V S G two point one without it taking another decade.
So Mr. Wallack, maybe you could answer this question or give us some advice. You know, when you're dealing with even a, sometimes it's a very small change, it can still have sort of a. Software or otherwise, it could still have dramatic impact on the functionality. And sometimes we don't know what the impact might be on the overall voting system. We have, you know, obviously are charged to make sure a system not going to fail on election day. How would you approach the whole de minimis argument where, let's say it's a software update? We're, how far can we go or should go for, for good stewards of, of a certification program? That we can make a change without a full certification event? And what, what does an abbreviated certification event look like? How would you approach it?
So what happens in many other commercial software projects is that. A developer who wishes to make a change has to provide that change. And there's a whole process sometimes called a pull request or a merge request. Where other developers review that change line by line and say, yes, I see that this change doesn't break anything or doesn't have any substantial change. And companies, you know, like, like Google with Chrome or other large projects like Microsoft with Microsoft Office. There are, they have fast track processes for getting security patches out quickly because they know they need to be able to move fast. And a security patch that brings along a whole new feature that wasn't part of the original project would never be allowed to go on the fast path. I think one of the interesting challenges that I don't have a good answer to is how to define this in a way that. They don't, that a vendor doesn't try to push a large change through this de minimis process by trying to expand the definition of de minimis. That might require some work. I'm not sure exactly. I can't tell you off the top of my head how to get that right.
Well, thank you. In the interest of time, I'm going to turn it back to the chair for his questions. We've reached the end of my five minutes, so I'll turn it over to Chairman Hall.
Thank you, Vice Chair Palmer. You know, so there's been a lot of conversation today, which, which repeats some of, of what we talked about, certainly the V V S G. And I know that. Obviously, the Help America Vote Act was passed in two thousand and two. And so there are parameters within that that I think everyone would like to see. Be more reflective of voting today. And, you know, I think part of, I think part of what we. Looked at within the T G D C effort was what is the scope of this? What are we talking about? And that's obviously primarily the voting machines in the polling place. And, you know, I think the mission in front of us was recognizing that most equipment is, is currently certified. To the V V S G one point O, which is a two point, a two thousand and five standard. And so creating this new standard as a baseline so that future efforts are not as significant of a lift. Where we're not trying to move forward with fifteen years of technology. But I think where we arrived at. And according to, in our first hearing, we had representatives from NIST who. Identified that, that equipment built to these requirements and, and the requirements that we have in front of us today. You know, they said we're one sufficient for manufacturers to design and build systems. And then two, they were all in agreement that a machine built to these requirements would be. More secure and more accessible and more usable than current equipment. Just for everyone on the panel, would you agree with those statements that, that if we were to adopt these requirements? Machines built to this would be more accessible, more usable and more secure. We want to start with Mr. Paratun and.
Yeah, yeah, this is Sachin. Yeah, yes, I, I think if, if we follow the current guidelines in two point O. Yes, the machines would be more accessible. But again, I go back to the, it's, you know, you, you can say it's more accessible, but. That also brings other limitations based on what, you know, we, what situation we find ourselves in. But yeah, if, if it's just a yes or no question, I would say, yes, it is more accessible. But there's, there's other variations that you can add to it.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. Wallack?
Sure.
That's the enthusiasm I like. And again, I talked about this little with the last panel with Mr. Lux. You know, and, and Sachin and Dan serving on the T G D C. Again, I don't know if you can comment on, I mean, again, this was a. Essentially a year long effort where NIST was continually updating these requirements. And we were having teleconferences and an in person meeting to go through sort of the push and pull and the fine tuning of these requirements. And, and obviously ultimately supported them, but I don't know, would you say that that was a. I mean, a significant effort and a thorough process. To get to the compromises that we have achieved thus far.
I would say yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wallack?
So I'm a bit of a late add to this. I, I'm a, I, I'm very new to the V V S, to the T G D C. So I wasn't really engaged in the process leading up to this, but nonetheless, I'm really impressed by the results of that process. I think we're, we're doing very good.
Thank you very much. In recognition of the time, I will pass to Commissioner Hicks for his first round of questions.
Thank you. Thank you, panelists for, for joining us here today. I just have a few quick questions and a couple of comments as well. You all know, security and accessibility have been two of the major focal points of two point O. And it will continue on into the comment period as well. Accessibility is not an option here. Accessibility is the law. And our ultimate goal is to ensure that the accessibility and accessibility merges most they can. Similar to what the last panel said in terms of what Selux had talked about overall. My question goes to barcodes. And I'm still trying to figure out why there's such pushback. On using my own device, bringing that into the polls, having that scanned in and printing out the ballot. Not saying that that barcode is the record. I'm saying more so that it's allowed to scan that in and that would cut down on lines and. Usability issues as well. Can someone explain to me what the pushback is on, on using that and, and. And, and moving forward with, with basically voting? Dr. Gilbert, you had your hand up?
Yes, just for the record, we, we were, we created that. In a sense, we demoed that to the E A C. Oh man, Tom, it's been nearly eight years now.
Years, yeah.
Yeah. So, so here, here's the proper way it should be done. I understand the security aspects and Dan, you could talk to this as well. But if you're going to do this properly, the barcode should be open. Meaning I should be able to scan it with any device and be able to look at it and read what it is. If it's a URL, if it's numbers, I should be able to see those numbers. Okay. It shouldn't be encrypted stuff. When I go scan it at a voting machine, the proper protocol should be the review screen should be required to, to come up first. In other words, I should be able to review it and change any vote. And this is a deterrent from vote buying. So if Sachin comes up to me and says, I'm going to give you $20 if you vote a certain way and gives me a barcode. I take his $20, I go vote, but then I can change what he. I take his twenty dollars, I go vote, but then I can change what he had me do. So review screen, then print. That's the proper protocol. And then, Dan, you could talk about the issues with the barcode. But if you're going to do it right, that would be the appropriate way to do it.
Dan, do you have any comments on that?
So, I mean, uh, one is absolutely correct that as long as the user has an opportunity to review and make changes, that helps mitigate some of the risks of bribery and coercion. There is a secondary attack that's also really, really nasty, which is that that barcode provides a digital input to the voting machine from the outside, which is untrusted. And that could actually be a nasty vector for attacking a voting machine. So we have to be a little bit careful about how we do this.
Okay. And there's ways to, to work with that. We, we can work on that. We know how to deal with that part. And Commissioner Hicks, just one more quick point about this. We actually did a study in two thousand and twelve after the long lines in Florida. We compared people voting by hand marked paper ballots at the time of D R E and using a barcode the way I just described. The barcode significantly reduced voting time. And I could share that with anyone who wants to see it, but it did make a difference.
Okay. My next quote, really quickly. When I've traveled to different locations, they've talked about our requirements and how they're the probably the best in the world still. Do you know of any other country that has requirements for their voting systems is stringent as the United States? Or use anything to, to that effect? I see everyone shaking no. And I guess in the interest of time, I would turn this to Commissioner McCormick for her round of questions.
Thank you. Thank you to all the panelists today. Uh, I think it's been very informational. Professor Gilbert, um, you know, we've been discussing the, the, the problem with insecurity of internet connected systems. Can you tell me if hand marked paper ballots are fully secure? Since those seem to be our two options, really?
No, remember, the reason we're even having this discussion was because of paper ballots. There are issues with it. I identified one, under vote hack is what I call it. I don't want to vote for either candidate, so I leave it blank and an insider just fills in the oval. If I don't catch you doing that, it's impossible to detect. There's an over vote hack. I want to, I want Bugs Bunny to win, but this person selected Daffy Duck. So what do I do? I fill in the oval for Bugs Bunny. It causes a over vote. Bugs didn't get a vote, but it took away from one from, uh, Daffy. Then we see issues with ballot design of paper ballots recently here in Florida. People missed a contest because they thought it was instructions at the bottom, is a gap at the bottom. So there are issues with paper ballots that are known. They just aren't talked about as much. But there are issues and, and then stray marks on ballots. We saw this where marks are not interpreted the same way by each individual or the scanner as well. At least so that the, the interpretation of a vote is at the mercy of the, the auditors.
So we've actually seen issues with handmade paper ballots. Have we seen any actual known hacking of the voting systems at this point?
Not to my knowledge. That doesn't mean that it couldn't be hacked, but I'm not aware of a case.
Okay, thank you. Director Pravitan, you discussed remote voting for persons with disabilities, especially those who have difficulty traveling. And, um, as you know, there's been a lot of input from various sectors to eliminate any kind of internet connectivity in voting due to the inability to secure it a hundred percent. Can you tell me how this would or could affect voters with disabilities and what kinds of systems voters with disabilities rely on that may be unavailable if we ban any kind of internet connectivity?
Well, if, if, if we go, if we go into remote, if, if that's an option and we ban any internet connectivity. Now, I'm not a security expert and I'm not going to pretend to be a security expert. But I, I will tell you, o- options gets limited really fast when you don't have you know, when, when your option is to do remotely. You know, as a blind person myself, there's no way I would be able to vote, uh, you know, if, if a mail-in ballot came in. And with remote remote voting with, if, if there's really not a way to get my information through an internet, I don't see how else I would get that information and cast that vote independently and privately and get it out there. It's transportation is always a, a barrier and it's still a barrier even with in-person voting. And a lot of people with disabilities don't end up voting because of that. And having an option through remote voting just opens up more doors for people with disabilities to really participate in this process. Do I have solutions on how to do it securely? I don't. I leave that up to the experts, but to, to just abandon it, saying that, you know, it's security issues because of internet. I just think it's short sighted for the future on what innovation can come and what can be done to improve on it.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, happy to have you at the E A C. So welcome. My question for you is, should the E A C provide warnings on the possible vulnerabilities that come with the various technologies? And if we did, how could we develop a way to do that in a balanced way, one that assures voters who depend on those technologies not to be disenfranchised and still provide as much security as possible?
I think there's certainly a role for the E A C to play by offering additional insight into the vulnerabilities that exist within different systems. That's simply the case that we see across multiple industries where bringing the security issues to light helps people make informed decisions. Uh, in this case, it could be the election officials making a purchasing decision. Or it could just be a member of the public being able to bring an issue to light and help advocate on their own behalf for more secure systems. We're talking about software vulnerabilities specifically. There is already a government role where in conjunction with the public sector and the private sector, vulnerabilities are disclosed in a responsible manner so that vendors have the opportunity to address them. But so that those vulnerabilities are also made public. This is a system that's currently working fairly well. And it's really hard to put the genie back in the bottle in terms of trying to pretend that not talking about vulnerabilities means that no one is actually exploiting them.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman, I pass it back to you for additional questions by the other. So I have others if, if we have time.
So we do have, we do have about a little bit more time. I think we're scheduled to in this section around three thirty, so we have a little bit more time. Correct me if I'm wrong. So we'll have, we could have another round of questions. My, my question. So I'm going to direct my question to Mr. Turner, Mr. Wallack. But others feel free to, to, to chime in. I, my question for Mr. Wallack is, could you describe a little bit more for our viewers and for us? The, the end-to-end systems and what that future voting system might look like and how V V S G two point O could serve as a framework for testing and certifying that? And then for Mr. Turner, I'd like you to talk a little bit about, if you could, the limitation of of external communications or internet connectivity inside the polling place and what sort of compromises were made with, with the V V S G, with the T G D C and your views on that, on that sort of compromise?
Okay, so you asked me to give you a description of what an end-to-end voting system might look like. I will give a, a very high level description of Microsoft's election guard not because I think it's the greatest, but because I think it's the closest to reality. They just had a, a trial of it in Fulton County, Wisconsin, in a local election there. So broadly, the voter experience is that it looks like a normal ballot marking device. They press buttons on the screen and when they're done, they, they where normally there would be one sheet of paper printed, which is here are your selections. Now it prints two sheets of paper. One is here are your selections that the human can read and say, yep, that's what I want. And that goes in a ballot box. And the second sheet that comes out, actually printed on a different color of paper, is your receipt. And then the voter can take that receipt home. And the receipt can be used to later cryptographically prove that their vote was part of the public tally, yet not be able to prove to any third party who they voted for. So this is, there, there's, there's a related thing where rather than casting a ballot, you can spoil a ballot, which is something that you can do anyway when you make a mistake. And part of the ballot spoilage process means that the excuse me, the relevant crypto cryptography will be decrypted. And now you have a proof that the machine encrypted your vote correctly and you will have caught it cheating if it got it wrong. So this creates a possibility that election officials or poll watchers can do audits of an election as it's ongoing to make sure that the computers are behaving in a correct fashion. So this creates a property called software independence that we can prove that the election is working correctly without having to trust a single line of the source code that's behind it. I can talk in way more detail, but I'm trying to keep.
Well, that's, that's great. And how would the V V S G two point O facilitate that? You talked about the innovation class, which of course has been around. It is, how, how would that, um, how, how would this two point O facilitate that?
So end-to-end or E to E is explicitly called out. I, I just did a search for E to E in the requirements document and it shows up on twenty-two separate pages. So end-to-end features are described in the requirements in a number of ways and places. And that really gives important guidance to a vendor trying to build something innovative and new, yet still comply with the requirements. So I think that this is I can, nobody can tell you that we got it right on the first try, but I think this is a huge step in the right direction.
Thanks, Mr. Turner.
So regarding your question about the use of wireless in the polling places or polling centers, that was a, a significant discussion as whether or not the risks of having wireless connectivity were going to outweigh the benefits and consistently fell on the side of it. It's simply too risky to allow that as a communication vector, one, for either being able to change the ballots as they were cast or two, uh, to be able to corrupt the data. And so I, I think that during the discussion process, uh, we fell down on the side of it's better just to go ahead and have the systems be air gapped so that you're basically dealing with just memory cards to transport the data versus having wireless technologies. And now the downside is that it definitely has a negative impact on accessibility because it significantly limits the kinds of devices that someone would be able to bring into the polling place to be able to interface with the ballot marking devices. For example, rather than using short distance communication protocols that are wireless like Bluetooth, use those with a typical headset. The requirements of having an air gap system mean that only an analog input would be able to be used. So it's like you're plugging into a headphone jack. Well, uh, you know, modern devices tend to not have headphone jacks. And so the shift is going toward personal devices being more wireless, which means that if future voting machines are going to have simply an analog headphone jack as the input, it really puts the pressure on the folks that are going to be using those devices to make sure that the jurisdictions have the, the voting machines working properly. They can't just bring their own device into the voting booth with them and cannot be able to have that wireless communication. You know, on the other hand, it also significantly impacts the amount of research and innovation that the private sector vendors would be willing to invest in order to make wireless happen in a way that's much more secure. We heard earlier where the expected lifespan of a machine is anywhere from a decade to almost two decades. And so if you're thinking from a business perspective, you know, there's very little incentive to invest significant research dollars into trying to find a secure wireless method if the current requirements that are likely going to be in place for a decade or more really put a hard stop on the use of any sort of wireless technologies.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. In the interest of time, I'm going to turn it over to the other commissioners if they have any follow-up questions. Any other commissioner?
Thank you, Vice Chair Palmer. Uh, I've got a couple of quick ones. Mr. Turner, you were involved with the, the NIST public working groups. To date, we have not received a significant amount of comments. Do you suspect there could be some correlation with the nature of those public working groups and, and the feedback that people have been able to provide on the front end of this process?
I believe there's been sufficient opportunity for the people who are interested in participating to be able to submit comments. I would not be surprised if there are future comments that are coming along the way. I just believe that commenting is, it can be challenging at times. You want to make sure that the comments are high quality and that they're authentic. And I think that other agencies have really struggled with ways to make sure that those high quality comments don't get drowned out by either inauthentic sources or heavy repetition, which, you know, can be used by some campaigns for good, but it is also a, a good opportunity for the commenting process to be disrupted.
Thank you. Uh, and, and to Mr. Wallack and Mr. Gilbert. You know, again, uh, one of the conversations that has been ongoing has been, you know, that this is a lengthy process and there are still parts of it to come. But are you satisfied that the requirements provide sufficient detail for manufacturers or vendors to design equipment around, to be able to take those next steps so that they're able to be building systems while we finalize the remainder of the process?
I do. And, um, as, as Professor Wallack has said, I agree with him a hundred percent. Look, this is not a, uh, the V V S G is not something we're going to define as written in stone and you stop. This is a developmental thing. It's going to keep going. And you have the vendors coming, you said, May twentieth or something like that. Commission, I would ask that you ask them that question, but from my perspective of what I've seen of their, the, the latest equipment is not that far off. And so I said, we, you, you get it out there, you allow for revisions. And we can help with that as Professor Wallack said, I'm just repeating what he said, but he's, he's right. There are industries out there. We know how to do some of these things. Let us help. The Microsoft, Google, think about how large those projects are they have and they're releasing these things there. We can figure this out, but don't let it be a burden. It shouldn't be another ten years before we release.
Thank you. And Mr. Wallack, do you want to add anything to that?
Sounds good to me.
All right. Well, then I'll move on in the interest of time. Commissioner Hicks?
Well, in my last minute, I would say that if each of you could take fifteen seconds and just elaborate a little bit on what we may have missed in asking you. And so that we can be fully prepared for our next hearing and moving forward. If you have anything. If not.
I'll go ahead and start that off. I'd say that you missed the opportunity to ask about the ramifications of what happens when old standards hang around. I think that the, the web industry as a whole has really been hit hard by vendors dragging their feet on updating, whether we're talking about T L S for secure connections or getting the Adobe Flash Player off of websites. I'll pick on this for a little bit here. I'm always intrigued to go to time.gov and see that it's still running a flash player. Well, it was as of, uh, just a couple of months ago, um, but there are over a thousand known, you know, very severe vulnerabilities to the Adobe Flash Player, but we still have a government agency that's running a website using it because it's still allowed to be around. So I think if we can push the industry forward and make sure the vendors know that at some point there is a clock that is ticking that will decertify machines. They will be highly incentivized to keep current and keep secure.
So that was a fantastic point. I just want to pile along. So I think that's a really great point. Right now, a number of states and large localities are in the process of procuring new equipment. I know my own city of Houston, Harris County, has equipment that they bought in the early two thousands and they're planning to start to, to, to look at alternatives after this election is over. The sooner V V S G two point O is in force, then that would enable these counties and localities and states to say, we are just going to require V V S G two point O right off the bat. And the sooner that that can be real, the sooner that that can have a significant impact on what, what's happening going forward.
And Commissioner Hicks, in less than seven seconds, if in light of COVID nineteen, what does that tell us about what's missing from V V S G two point O?
This is Sachin. I'll just one quick comment. I'll This is Sachin. I'll uh just one quick comment I'll add is, you know, what can we do going forward uh to make sure accessibility and security is equally weighed so that one doesn't trump the other? So pushing forward to have equal balance of both of them.
Thank you. With that, we'll move with Commissioner McCormick. We have time for maybe one, maybe two questions.
Well, I'll just make a comment since we're out of time and that is uh uh based on comments by Commissioner Hovland and uh Mr. Turner. I would say get your comments in now or forever hold your peace. So uh, we need your comments uh and we'd like to see what you have to say and your and to have your input on this process. So please take advantage of that right now. Thank you.
I'd like to thank our speakers for joining us today. This discussion, I'll now turn things over to Chairman Hovland.
Thank you, Vice Chair Palmer. Uh, on behalf of my fellow commissioners, I would like to thank all of the participants in today's hearing for their input and contributions to this discussion. Uh, we'd also like to thank the many people who have contributed to the VBSG two point O development process thus far. This includes staff members at NIST and the EAC, members of the elections community and broader public who have been engaged in the process, especially those serving on the TGDC and the EAC Standards Board and Board of Advisors who play critical roles in developing and reviewing the VBSG. We will hold another virtual hearing, May twentieth. And the EAC will be discussing these requirements uh with our Standards Board and Board of Advisors uh later this spring or early summer as well. Uh, we had reserved time today for public testimony, but we did not have anyone sign up in advance. We will make that opportunity available again on our May twentieth virtual public hearing. Uh, and I would certainly add to what Commissioner McCormick said, encouraging interested parties uh to consider either signing up for a a public comment via the May twentieth hearing or by submitting public comments until June twenty second uh at regulations.gov. Thank you for joining us uh and your interest in the process. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn today's hearing.
Move that we adjourn?
Second.
Uh, being properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. This uh meeting of the Election Assistance Commission is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.